All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting order. It is Tuesday, December 12th, 2023 at 7:00. And we'll start with roll call to my left.
Homer, City Council member.
Phil Hamilton, City Council member.
Shelby Carcelari, City Council member.
Ronnie Price, Mayor.
Mike Warrington, City Council member.
Troy Taber, City Council member.
Tim Berry, City Council member.
Bub Buchanan, Police Chief.
Donna Davis, Chief Financial Officer.
Chad Russell, Fire Chief.
Rick Lance, Director of Public Works and Utilities.
J.T. Klaus, City Attorney.
Les Mangas, Director of Community Development.
Joelyne Graham, Assistant City Administrator.
Jennifer McCoslin, City Administrator.
All right, this time Eric Goodman of River Lawn Christian Church will lead us in invocation. Thank you, sir.
All right, let's pray. Dear Lord and gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for the beautiful day that you gave us today, Lord, and we just ask you to be with us tonight in this council meeting, Lord. We ask for wisdom. We know that your word tells us that when we ask for wisdom, that you'll give it to us. And we just pray for that tonight and for all the council members, Lord, as they make decisions. And, Lord, I just think of the most wonderful time of the year, and I just ask you to give us blessings, Lord, over and above what we could imagine. But we pray for those, Lord, that maybe it's not the most wonderful time of the year for them. Maybe they're struggling with the loss of a loved one, or maybe just hard times, Lord. We ask you just to let us be a light to them, let us be a blessing to them also. And we're thankful for this opportunity tonight, Lord, just to be here and meet together, and ask you to continue to bless this community, Lord, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. If you would, join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time I'll open the floor for public forum. If you have something you'd like to speak with us about, state your name, your address for the record, and keep it short. No takers. Public forum is closed. Acceptance of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Six zero? All right. Pretty good, I can count. All right, at this time I'm going to go down to the podium. We have some things we're going to take care of. No, I'm not resigning, Troy.
Okay.
Good try, though. So that's what I want to do, I want to start talking about Troy Taber. What he's done for this city over the last 12 years is nothing short of wonderful. He cares about the people of this community, and these are some of the things he's done. First elected to Andover City Council in April of 2011, and has served the last 12 years, being reelected twice. Moved to Andover in 2005. 12 years is a long time. I'm going to share many of the committees and project Councilman Taber worked on over the last 12 years, dedicated to service. Please forgive me, Councilman Troy Taber, if I missed anything. All right. Troy served as official city council liaison to virtually every organization possible, including Andover Senior Center, USD 385, YMCA, Rotary, Site Plan Review Committee, Convention and Visitors Bureau, Chamber of Commerce, REEP, Regional Economic Area Partnership Planning Commission, Butler Community College. Councilman, we were missing WAMPO. Troy, oh, it's on the other page, pardon me. Councilman Taber served service to some of these external organizations, extended his role as the Andover representative. Troy took lead on leadership roles in both the League of Kansas Municipalities and WAMPO. In the league, Troy ultimately served as Vice President of their governing body, governing board, and in WAMPO Wichita Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, Troy served as Vice Chair of the Transportation Policy Board. Councilman Taber has also shaped many, and I mean many, city projects through his involvement in the following internal committees. Golf Course Committee, Salary Review Committee, Amphitheater Design Committee. Wow.
I didn't draw it, though.
Fire Department Standard of Cover, Operation Analysis Committee, Comprehensive Development. He created not one, but two. Helped create not but one, two comprehensive development plans, which have guided the city's development since 2014, and will continue to do so for another 10 years. Finally, Councilman Taber has served as President of the Council in '20 and '21. And this is the part that's important to me, because in '20, I didn't know nothing about being Mayor. I didn't know nothing about City Council. I didn't know nothing about nothing. So he sat beside me and helped me through some times. For example, I used to read the deal in front of me, and it would say PDF at the end. And I would say PDF, and so he let me go on for, I don't know, a meeting or two, and he said, you know, you don't have to say PDF. So I can't tell you how much he's done for this city, and how much I appreciate what he's done for the citizens of Andover. It's no small thing. And I know he's not going anywhere. He'll still be around to... And here's one thing I really appreciate about Troy and the workshops where we do a lot of the city's business. Troy would oftentimes play the devil's advocate and bring up stuff that was the opposite. Huh? His daughter's even checking her head. And I said that very nicely, didn't I? But he would do that so we'd think about both sides before we made a decision on where to direct the city. So it's no small thing what he's done. And I personally thank you and appreciate you, not only as a council member, but as a friend. And we have more business to do, just on a different level, right? So if you would, Troy, come on down here. Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate you, ma'am.
You gonna join us, or you gonna hear the whole time?
Sure.
All right. It ain't verbal. All right. This one's going to be extremely joyful for me and extremely difficult for me. So Shelby and Tim and I all ran at the same time and got elected in the same election cycle. And Shelby has, was elected to Andover City Council for a four-year term in November of 2019. Moved to Andover in 2016. I still remember your face when you put it on Facebook, you're holding your paper that you run from Mayor. I see it all the time, right? Dang it. Shelby served as, Shelby served as the official city council liaison to the Historical Society, League of Kansas Municipalities, Butler Community College, Convention and Visitors Bureau, already the Augusta Rail Trail Initiative, and was my sounding board. A lot of times I'd reach out to her, or she'd reach out to me and say, hey, stay off Facebook, or stay off this, or stay off that. So because I didn't know what I was doing, and she's a very intelligent person. And so I leaned on her quite a bit in the last four years. So we've all gone through, this governing body has gone through a lot together, and this staff. We no sooner got sworn in than Tim and I and Shelby, and we faced a worldwide pandemic. And it was very difficult. And then we faced down a tornado. And unlike the rest of us on the governing body, Shelby's home, while not ruined, was affected. Her and her husband, and she's a dog parent, spent three months in a hotel motel, or whatever you call them nowadays. And then they spent another seven or eight months in a house. And then when they did get back home, they got to stay in the basement, right? So she went through a lot more than the rest of us. And on top of that, this is how, let me say this first. Shelby has been here for the citizens of Andover without fail for four years. In the four years besides the things I've mentioned, Shelby, Shelby lost her mother. And she has been here without fail, and been here for me when I needed it, not knowing how bad she needed me to be her friend. So not only is Shelby a great council member and been a great service for this city, she did it... So my friend Colonel Vogel says that you can't pick your challenges. You are the epitome of that statement. You can't pick your challenges, but you can, it's how you handle them. And I got to tell you, my friends, you have handled them above and beyond what anybody could think or ask. So I thank you. And come on down here, please. These two ladies have kept me out of so much trouble. And J.T., what did Mayor say? Right? All right, one more. I want to thank Dr. Joe Ford. We had a council member step down, and I asked him to, I asked him to step in, and he did so without reluctance. I appointed Joe to City Council in December 2020, and elected, and he was elected to a full term in November of 2021. He moved to Andover, Joe moved into Andover in 2014. Dr. Ford has served as City Council Liaison to REEP, again Regional Economic Area Partnership. Councilman Joe Ford also served on the grant of public funds. Joe has, oh, and this is very cool. I nominated Dr. Ford to be an honorary commander at McConnell Air Force Base, and he really championed that position. And not only did he, his wife has been out there a lot to welcome our soldiers, to help them through trouble. And it's, while it seems like insignificant, it's really, really important to do what we can to bring, make McConnell families feel part of our family. And I just really want to thank him for that personally. Dr. Ford resigned from the City Council effective October 10th, 2023. And we wanted to take this opportunity to thank him for his nearly three years of service, and we will get his gift to him. So I thank you all for your time, and I thank Troy and Shelby for your service. I can't tell you what it means to this city and to me personally. Thank you very much. Thank you. Mike knows me too well. Mike slid a box of Kleenexes over here.
It just means you're passionate about what you do, Mayor.
That's what I'm saying. All right, I got to get through this, right? Give me just a second. All right, 7-2 awards. I'm sorry. Awards Employee Milestones. Chief Russell and Chief Buchanan, or you can.
Oh, she's going to.
My favorite people.
She's, I'm just up here to stand here and help you give the award. Becky, who's been amazing with this, she wants to give Eric since his 15 years. So Eric, come on up here, please.
Eric Westbrooks is a lifelong resident of Augusta and has worked in law enforcement for over 11 years prior to coming to Andover. Eric started with the Andover Police Department Communications Division on October 6, 2008. He was promoted to Master Communication Officer 1 in May of 2014, Master Communication Officer 2 in May of 2016, and Master Communication Officer 3 in November of 2020. In October of '22, Eric transitioned from a Master Communication Officer into a new position and became the first Community Service Officer for the department. Eric's extra duties include handling the majority of fingerprint services, completes walk-in reports, assists dispatching calls when the high call volume, and is also a communication training officer. Community Service Officer Westbrooks was the recipient of the 2014 and 2020 Civilian Employee of the Year Award. I've had the honor to work with Eric for the last almost nine years, and have enjoyed every minute of it. And please join me to congratulate him and his 15-year service award with the city of Andover.
We'll give you a chance to speak if you'd like it, sir. All right, now this is Chief Chad Russell.
Yes, Chief Chad Russell. John Gabriel. Captain Cheslick. Cap, you want to say a few words? I told him he didn't have to talk. What? This is Lieutenant John Gabriel. He's the good-looking one between the two of us. Tenacious. John Gabriel is many things. Tenacious is one of them. I've had an opportunity to know John for 10 years, and he's quite a character. So not only does he have a great sense of humor, he's also really intelligent. And so sometimes he tells a joke, and you don't really understand that it might have been about you until you're driving away and go, wait a minute, what did he just pull on me? John spent a long time serving us as an Air Force Airmen, and I really enjoy talking to him about that. He, of course, like the rest of you veterans, are pretty humble about your experience, but it's fun to draw stories out of him. As a matter of fact, do you have a fun story you want to tell? No, never mind. His family is interesting. It's a family of public servants, they really are. And it's interesting, the conversations. His wife works for Sedgwick County EMS, and it's interesting the conversations he brings. And he really adds a lot of color to our family. And every day, in a good way, a very, very good way. He's really pleasant to be around. His service, rather than listing out all the stuff he does because Mr. Mayor wants to move on with the agenda at some point, I wanted to talk about just, he was hired as a reserve, a volunteer firefighter in August of '05. He transitioned to full-time in 2008, and he was promoted to Lieutenant in June of '22. The impact he's had is really immeasurable, but we can see some of his impact by some of the awards that he's, I hate to say that, awards he's won, awards he's earned. He was firefighter of the year both in 2009 and 2019. That's a very big deal for us. Even bigger than that, he was the Tenzenga Leadership Award. I'm sure you're wondering what the heck did he just say? Tenzenga Leadership Award for our fire department, both in '21 and '22. The significance of that is really hard to measure because his peers nominated and voted for him to be in that position, to win that award. So that speaks volumes, of course. And then there is one award that is the highest award that any Kansas firefighter can be awarded, and that is the Tom McGoye Service Award. And we're going to learn some more about John's involvement in that award for this year. John leads by example every single day. He's conscientious, he has a positive attitude. No matter what's going on, you can count on John to not only have a joke, but also have a sincere smile and a caring heart and a servant's heart. He's forthright, he's extremely trustworthy. He always respects the chain of command, but sometimes will make sure that I'm informed about things that I need to know that are going on just because he cares about the department so much and our family so much, that he makes sure that everyone involved is kept abreast of what's going on so we can have the best outcomes. He's organized and very, well, let's just stop with organized. So he's the guy who, we're required to do certain things to be in our air packs every year, and he's the principal. So he has to call us and make sure that we get all of our testing done. And he just made Chief Seville cry earlier in the week because, yeah, because Chief Seville was late on his testing, and John had to be the enforcer, which he can do well. To sum it all up, 15 years of service is an absolutely amazing accomplishment, and I'm so grateful for your steadfast service. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. I was making sure my wife was there to hear all that. Thank you.
All right. 7-3, AFR Award, Andover Fire Department. Award State Fire Marshal Mark Ingram. Did I say that right? Thank you, sir. And Chief Russell, thank you for being here.
I will, I will join, we're going to tag team this just a little bit, but I will just introduce your state fire marshal, newly mented. Been on the job, what time is it? Been on the job a very short time.
It's been a month.
It's been a month. So he has, we're giving him his one-year service pin tonight. And so thank you, Mark, for being here. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. Of all the things that I get to do in this role as fire marshal, this one gives me those excitement, is the one that I'm going to be looking forward to each year. And I'm a little concerned that Andover's received it two years in a row. We may have to have a talk about what your department's doing, but no, I, it's amazing and to be able to recognize firefighters for going above and beyond. Now, I will say that in my heart, every firefighter is a hero, right? It's just waiting for an opportunity to come out and do it. But the instances that these guys faced and what they went in and did should make all of you proud in your department and the people that are taking care of your city. So each year, the state fire marshal joins with the Kansas State Association of Fire Chiefs and this Kansas State Firefighter Association to honor a firefighter or firefighting group for heroic actions above and beyond the call of duty with the Tom McGoye Fire Service Award. The award is actually named in honor of Wichita Fire Chief Tom McGoye, who perished in a fire along with three others. Chief Fire Inspector Merle Wells, firefighter Jimmy Austin, and firefighter Dale Mishler in a collapse at the Yingling Auto Dealership in Wichita in 1968. After careful consideration and input from both the Chiefs Association and the Firefighters Association of the different nominations for this award that were received this year, Engine 16 and Ladder 15 crews from Andover Fire Rescue were selected as the recipients for this year's Tom McGoye Service Award. The crews were selected for their heroic actions and rescue of two individuals with special needs from a structured fire earlier this year. Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to call those firefighters forward to be recognized. Thank you. Lieutenant John Gabriel. If you guys couldn't, go up here. Firefighter Kevin Taylor. Firefighter Jason Emily. Firefighter Caleb Fissler. Oh, no, stand out there, please. Oh, yeah. Captain Chad Cheslick and firefighter Skylar Akins.
While these gentlemen stand here in the position they love while we speak about them, I want to tell you just a little bit about what happened where these guys were able to show why they come to work. Andover Fire Rescue responded to a house fire with multiple people with special needs trapped on May 1st, 2023. AFR arrived to find a well-involved, single-family residence with neighbors stating that one person was bed-bound on the first floor and one with limited mobility spent most of their time in the basement. Engine 16 crew arrived and initiated an immediate search with a hand line. Crews found heavy dark smoke banked down more than 70% of the room height and flames beginning to enter the living room space from both the kitchen and the formal dining areas. Firefighter Taylor operated the line, protecting the ingress egress path to the basement. Lieutenant Gabriel was able to locate the basement stairs and immediately went down, finding one individual able to escape. He moved the individual up the stairs where he was assisted by firefighter Fissler in getting the gentleman out into the care of other responders on scene. That individual was transported to the burn center in Wichita for smoke inhalation and minor burns. Gabriel and Fissler then immediately returned to the attack line where they continued to search for the other occupant and knocked down fire. Simultaneously, the Ladder 15 crew had passed the engine crew and was crawling on their stomachs because of the intense heat, trying to make it down the hallway to the back bedroom. Captain Cheslick realized they were not going to be able to make it down the hallway due to the incredible amount of heat, and made the decision to pull his crew out the front door. After quickly retrieving what we call the vent enter search ladder, they made entry into the northeast bedroom window. Cheslick and firefighter Akins vented the window, finding dense smoke and heat, high heat throughout the room. They quickly located the other victim near the middle of the room and moved her out through the window, where she received CPR and advanced care by Butler County EMS. She was transported to Kansas Medical Center and unfortunately later passed away.
Thank you, Chief. What Chief didn't say is that these folks went in there with minimal staffing. I think you probably all realize the standard is 17 firefighters on scene for a structured fire. And these folks did it with what they had. And they went in, and they risked their lives, and they were able to make a save, and unfortunately not another, but it's phenomenal. And Chief didn't say that the heat conditions were so bad in there, as I understand their gear was damaged, which that gear is built for hundreds and up to 1,000 degrees. If we start seeing that, the heat level that they were in is just astronomical. So my utmost respect for you guys, thank you for what you do, and thank you on behalf of the state of Kansas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
7-4, Presentation, Andover Community Food Bank. How are you tonight, ma'am?
I am well, thank you. Wow, that's hard to follow. Congratulations to everyone, wow, that's amazing. Thank you, I'm Misty Bowright. I am the current president of the Andover Community Food Bank here in Andover. It's surprising that we have a lot of our residents that still don't realize that we have a food bank in our community. We've been here for over 30 years, which is hard to believe. I've been a part of the food bank for probably the last six, seven years. And what I wanted to do was tonight to come to say thank you for the support that the city council has given to our summer lunch program. So we provide summer lunches to the Andover School District. We have done it, gosh, for the last eight, nine years. I've been, so not only a food bank president, but I'm also the coordinator for the... I've been, so not only a food bank president, but I'm also the coordinator for the summer lunch program. We help those in our community during the summertime that need a little bit of extra help during, when the kids are home, and all those activities are going on. And we put in a request when the council puts out opportunity for us to have grants, and you have graciously provided a $2,000 grant for us for the last several years. And I just wanted to, number one, say thank you, but also to let you know how we spend that money. The last few years, we have seen a rise in the number of families and students that we have assisted, as well as the cost of those lunch packages have increased, just like anything that we see at the grocery store, anything else that we go and try to spend money on. This year, we served 163 families. That's individual families in our community with a total of 1,680 lunches that we served through the summer. That is individual, excuse me, individual bags. So we get lunch kits from the Kansas Food Bank. There are five different, I call them flavors. We package five in a bag, and then we also provide shelf milk, which isn't refrigerated milk, but it's shelf milk, to each student or each child that the family comes to pick up lunches for. So by the time you add that 1,680 times all of the children we serve, it's almost 10,000, 10,000 lunch kits that we distribute through the summer. So in the past, we have utilized the grant to assist with fresh fruit. This year, we put it toward paying for the, the lunch kits. Next summer, we're looking to make some revisions to the program. We're going to work more closely with the school districts to make sure that we're really targeting those families that need assistance through the regular school year and making sure that we help them during the summer. This year, we kind of had just a free-for-all, and we truly had families that probably didn't need the assistance, but we're not going to turn anyone away as they, they come through our line and, and we're there to provide. We're also looking at some additional funding grants to help cover the cost. We're trying to take away the bulk of the cost away from the Andover Food Bank, only because it really is a very high cost to the bank account, to the food bank. And so we are looking at some additional options and some changes that we're going to make for the next summer coming up. The program is not going away. We don't want it to go away. We just need to be more mindful of who we're serving and how we're serving it. In addition to the summer lunches, St. Vincent de Paul, in conjunction with the St. Vincent de Paul Society, Caring and Sharing, and some very generous donors, we also do backpacks and school supplies for students in our community. Parents have, that come for summer lunches have the opportunity to fill out a flyer, and we go out, we pull the list from the school district, and we supply school supplies for the following school year. So the last week that they pick up their summer lunches, they also pick up their backpacks, their school supplies, and all of those types of things. So I do know that St. Vincent also has been beneficiaries of the grants that the city council has provided. So again, it's my, here to say thank you for your support. We continue to do what we can to support this wonderful community that, that we live in, and I thank you for the time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate what you do, and I was one of those people that had no clue when I ran that we had a food bank, so.
Yeah.
People don't think of Andover as a community that needs that, but we very much need it, and thank you.
It is really, for COVID, it was a, a critical piece and for during the tornadoes. And so we are there to provide assistance and so spread the word if you know folks that could, could use a little help. So happy holidays and thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your service, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Real quick, Misty, if someone wants to donate to the food bank, where, how do they go about doing that?
We can, the, the food bank, for those that might not know, is actually in the Andover Methodist Church that's over on Andover Road, right next to Metalark, the old Metalark Elementary, I should say. They, if they, if you go to the website of the Andover Methodist Church, there is a link for our food bank there. We also are on Facebook, and so if, if there's a need, anybody can donate. We have a, we have a new executive director and assistant director who's kind of brought us into technology, and we have a QR code now on Facebook that you can scan and you're able to donate that way as well.
Perfect.
Thank you for the question. Appreciate it.
We also have a, I don't know if I'm saying it right, Food for Fines program. How's that work?
Yes.
Anybody?
I was gonna say, I don't know the dollar value, but if someone knows the dollar value, I know you can trade your food for fines.
Yeah, I don't have the dollar value as well, but at least if you bring in a can, I believe it's a dollar up to a certain amount that they will take off your fine. The courts will do that.
Okay.
Five? Fifty.
Yes, up to 50, yes.
Up to $50.
And if you bring food in, don't bring nothing you wouldn't eat yourself, because the ladies in their front office will send you back home.
Or expired food.
Or expired food, yes.
Or expired food.
Thanks again.
Thank you. All right. Nine, nine-one proclamation wreath. Did I miss one?
Yeah, eight point one.
Oh, citizens' requests, Sunlight Children's Services Frosty 5K Run fundraiser, and Daniel and two fine ladies will explain this to.
Daniel, you cleared the room, so.
Yep.
These guys are already signed up for the Frosty 5K, so they don't.
You lost your audience, Daniel.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For your consideration here on eight point one is approval for fundraising activities, as you're all probably familiar. That's one of the activities that require the approval of the governing body when it takes place on public grounds. I have with me tonight, Bren from Sunlight Children's Services, you might recognize, and then Riley from Andover Central NHS, and they have been working on a fundraising 5K event for January 6th here at Central Park. We are still dialing in some routing issues due to the cell tower project that is underway, but the concept is to headquarter out of the gazebo and do a circuit of both a 1K and a 5K amongst the Central Park property and then on the 10-foot sidewalk network around the, the school property. So no road closures or anything like that for your consideration. They have a couple of dozen registered already. They're looking at this event to potentially have 100 participants. If you have any questions, we are here available to answer any of those if you, if you should have them.
Anyone?
Will there be any medals given out at that race?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Do you, is, how do you register?
We have a link set up on our Instagram page, and we have sent out links to parents via email for our schools in the Andover District.
Is that on the Andover Central website or, I mean, on, on their Instagram or is it National Honor Society?
We set up our own Instagram, and then we post it on our Facebook pages via Sunlight Children's Home and our National Honor Society.
Okay, all right.
If you send me that link, I'll be more than happy to put it on my Facebook page and help you all I can. So, well, I will not run because I don't do that, but I will.
There is an event on our Facebook, so if you go to Sunlight Children's Services Facebook page, there's an event on there that you can share on Facebook as well.
Love to help you.
Yeah, with it, and there's a QR code that you can also circulate and scan. I gave Daniel some flyers that we can pass out as well for the registration.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Then I'd move to approve the fundraising activities for the Frosty 5K Run sponsored by Sunlight Children's Services in Andover, Kansas, or Andover Central Park on January 6th, 2024.
Second. What, Tim?
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Now, nine-one proclamation wreaths across America, and Councilman Barry is going to...
Actually, Councilmember Tabor's gonna do it.
He's letting me do it on, on the last day. All right. Whereas this year, National Wreaths Across America Day will be held on Saturday, December 16th at 11:00 a.m., and whereas wreaths across America is an American nonprofit organization established in 2007 by wreath producer Morrell Worchester, assisted by veterans and truckers. Its primary activity is distributing veterans' wreaths for placement on graves and military cemeteries. And whereas this event happens simultaneously each year across the nation at nearly 4,000 participating cemeteries, and there are more than 55 participating locations here in Kansas, including Augusta, Benton, El Dorado, and Rose Hill. And whereas the Wreaths Across America event will be held for the second year in Andover at the cemetery. And whereas they have raised the funds to sponsor a veteran's wreath for each of the 230 veterans buried in that cemetery. And whereas the community is encouraged to invite friends, family, coworkers, and organizations to join us as we strive to honor every veteran. Therefore, I, Troy Tabor, with the city council assembled in, assembled in regular session on the 12th day of December 23rd, 2023, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say that again, session on the 12th day of December of 2023, hereby recognizes wreaths across America in Andover and proclaim December 16th, 2023, Wreaths Across America Day in Andover.
Consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items 10.1 through 10.11 as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Where are y'all going?
That wasn't very sneaky.
Kansas Medical Center 11-1 Resolution to Intent, Resolution of Intent to Issue IRBs to Kansas Medical Center LLC, and Jenny will speak about this.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. Kansas Medical Center approached City of Andover a few weeks ago to tell us about an exciting new purchase that they will be making for the hospital. It's been a little while, but as some of you have experienced and remember, we can utilize the IRB tools to assist local businesses when they purchase equipment. It's not just for property or a facility. Because it's a equipment purchase in this case, there is not a property tax exemption associated with it, because property taxes are not being abated, that foregoes the need for the cost analysis as well as the public hearing. So while there's typically multiple steps to do IRB approvals, because this is only for the sales tax exemption on that equipment, this is the only step that you have tonight, and once you, presuming you approve this resolution, then that will allow KMC to move forward with the IRB sale. Mr. Steve Hadley is here tonight, the hospital's chief business executive. Should you have any questions you would like to ask him, but per your policy, the mayor and I, who comprise your IRB committee, did meet with Mr. Hadley on December 8th, and we do recommend approval of the IRBs. Bond counsel is also present if you have any questions on the legal side.
Any questions?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I got a question for you, you or Jenny. So what does this, what does this give KMC, I mean, what's this tool do for the community or how does it increase business for KMC?
I would prefer Mr. Hadley answer that because we did ask him that, and he gave us a great answer, but I would like him to talk about it.
Sure, step on the phone.
So this, this purchase is for the replacements of our existing cath labs. We have two in the facility, and they were original when we opened in, in 2006. And with the age of that equipment, it's becoming harder to recruit physicians to work in the hospital with that equipment. And about a third to 40% of our business in that area comes from out of county, from western Kansas and from eastern Kansas, so there is revenue generated in the county and in the city of Andover by, by the use of this equipment. So that's predominantly the value.
Thank you.
I, I have one, one question. What's the turnaround time on this? I mean, do they have these in stock and you just say, hey, we own two or?
They'll probably go in around the 20, 22nd of January.
Okay.
Pretty quick.
No, they're, they're not in stock. They come from Germany.
Do they come from, okay. I, you know, it didn't matter. I was just curious myself.
Yep, appreciate the question.
It's pretty fascinating what the machine does. You explained it to us quite articulately, and it's, it's something that's of great value to the community now.
It is. It's, it's progressed a lot since we opened in six. The cardiology business has progressed quite a lot, and this allows for a lot of things that we can't do today as well, and I expressed to the mayor and the administrator that this will allow us to do a material valve replacement without a, I call it cracking of the chest, that's not the right term, but, but they can actually do that through the catheterization instead of having an open-heart surgery, and it's a big deal, so.
So it's less obtrusive than recovery time, obviously, and much quicker.
Go home the next day, one-night stay.
Impressive.
So, it's valuable equipment.
Will this equipment be solely at the Andover KMC?
Yes. Yes, it's fixed asset.
Perfect, thank you.
And is the expectation it'll have a 15 to 20-year life? Unknown.
You know, you just don't know. The last few years, I've been out there for 15 years this December, and it's amazing what the manufacturing companies do as far as the servicing and the restriction of the servicing. So these labs we have have been deemed out of service or end of life for five years, but we've had good people taking care of them, and they've been, they've been functioning, but it's time to move on.
Very good.
With technology the way it is, they, they come up something new in five years that's even better, probably.
And they try like crazy to sell it.
Yeah. All right.
Big ticket.
Any other questions?
Shelby, you wanna take one of these?
Sure. Move to approve the resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds to the Kansas Medical Center LLC in an amount not to exceed $1,900,000 for the cost incurred with purchasing, acquiring, and installing two sets of cardiac catheterization laboratory equipment and the cost for the issuance of the bonds.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you for your support, counsel. We appreciate you.
I'm not trying my darnest not to be your first customer.
I know.
Darned too.
All right. 12-1 wastewater utility rates, and Rick, well, I drew a blank. Will talk to us about this tonight. I started to say PDF because I can't get it off my mind. Thanks, Troy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. I think I have some slides. Okay, there we go. So I'm gonna endeavor to shorten this from the presentation that you all endured at your last workshop, and we cut out quite a bit of slides, and there's still a few left in there, but I'm gonna give you kind of a quick background on where we're at, how we got to where we're at tonight, and kind of why, and where we go forward from here. So in 2020, the city selected professional engineering consultants to perform a comprehensive study on our sewer system that included our collection and our treatment system. Happy to say that basically the collection system doesn't need anything that, which is rare when you do a study like that, so we're very blessed in that side of the, of the house. On the plant side, we expected that there would be recommendations on that because you design plants for 20 years, that's industry standard, and in 2020... And in 2020, we were already past that 20 years. So we had maximized the life out of it and had, and were operating beyond on it adequately at the time.
Rick, sorry, say that year again so that everyone, you know, the community knows. 2020 is when it ended?
2020 is when we began with the comprehensive study. And then in 2021, after the study was complete, we retained PEC. They turn, they teamed up with Burns to form a partnership to do our comprehensive, or do our plant redesign. Now, they were selected out of a group of other engineering consultants and were hands down, actually, the ones that were out of the group that were selected. So, you know, the existing plant out there was built in 1977. It went through an upgrade in '96, a major upgrade in '96. If you'll notice, that's approximately 20 years. Like I said, these are generally designed for about 20 years. We were able to get past 20 years this time due, in large part, to the, our flow rates are quite lower than what is standard because we do not suffer from infiltration because our system is in such good shape on the collection side. So our volume is, wasn't driving it. But in 2019, we started and built a, a dewatering facility to do dry sledge. We used to liquid apply. So where we're at now is, you know, there's three main reasons why we need to do a major plant upgrade. Obviously, it's, you know, address the capacity going forward. We want to make sure that we have a plant that can meet our growing community's needs for now and the future. This will meet it for the design life of the plant, plus probably about another 10 years. Address the age and the condition of equipment. Brian and his team, I can't stress this enough, have done a remarkable job of keeping this plant operational. There's, I would say there's a lot of plants out there that team could not have kept this plant operating, but we are blessed to have a crew that we do. I can't say that enough. You probably heard me say that once, and you probably will hear me say it again. Having dealt with multiple sewer plant crews over my career, we're blessed. Just wanted you to know that. And then as, as, as plants, parts fail, the, the other issue we have is that the manufacturer of the plant sold, the company that bought it, really bought it to resell parts, and they're, they're only reselling the parts really, really profitable for them, and they're, you know, they're not all readily available. So again, Brian and his team have been able to kind of take things together, mash parts together to keep things operational until we can get to the point, hopefully later or mid, early in 2024, we can start the process to begin construction. And then to also, the third reason which we knew was coming was to address upcoming permit requirements for, as a reminder, KDHE through the, the authority of the EPA issues permits to the state or through, to the city to operate the water treatment plant. And they typically will do a model where they give you goals. That's an indication that that's coming in your future permit, and it'll be a limit. The goal, you attempt to meet it, but if you don't get in compliance with that goal, there's not a regulatory fine or anything like that that comes along with it. Then future permits, it becomes a limit. We were expecting and have been told that it will be in our future permit, a limit on phosphorus removals amongst other small changes. So our existing plant was never designed to be, that kind of compliance with phosphate removal. It was 25 years ago, and it was not on the radar at that time. As you could tell by this list of items up here, just about virtually every part of the plant's getting touched. Again, there's parts in that plant that go back to 1977. The parts that weren't there typically was done in 1996. So there's a lot of things that are getting touched and upgraded or expanded in capacity or abilities. This is the big number, and it does include basically 16 and a half percent in contingency and escalation factor for inflation. That's how we got to that number. I would add that the city has been paying out of pocket already for the engineering as we go through our funding that we have already in place and is already not included in that. So we've been able to pay cash for that as we go. And once you get the plant built, obviously, you got to operate it and maintain it. And we've done, the team with PEC and, and Burns have done their best at estimating the operational costs of the plant. There are some factors in there that really are, make it really difficult to get exact on that. So, you know, as you'll notice in there, the electrical cost is what's the big driver. Most of the other increases are more or less going at a standard inflation rate. But as we expand the size of the plant, you have now double the pumps in some cases, in some cases more. Because we're doing, treating for phosphates, we have some different treatment processes that require a little higher use of electricity, too. So we're trying to get that done without the induction of chemical, but we did set the plan up if we have to. We can't meet it in the future to use a chemical at that point. But, you know, trying to get it done without the use of chemical is going to require a little more electric use, too. But we'd rather not induce chemical into the water if we don't have to.
Is it cheaper, Rick?
Not necessarily, no. And we needed to do some of this anyway, so it's not all that cost electricity is not all attributed to that, only just a small portion of it. So in kind of getting to the rate part of it, we had to figure out, okay, we're estimating on the growth of the city, too, on commercial, or on residential, commercial users. Now, these are conservative numbers. You'll notice that in '24 to '25, there is a little bigger of a jump. And then after that, it's back to a smaller jump, which is conservative based on different models around, but they use the, the more conservative model because we didn't want to estimate too high and then not have enough money to pay for our operating cost. Then here's a breakdown of the varying costs going forward. You'll notice that there's two things that jump. One is debt service. We have zero debt service now. And so obviously, the city is not set in a position to fund $40 million improvement in cash. We do have a reasonably large amount of cash for a city of our size on hand, which helps bring down the cost and the impact of this, but we do not have enough to pay cash for this project. Additionally, the contractual variables is the, they're a larger jump. The rest of those are more along the lines of inflation rates and growth rates. Some of those, as we grow, we treat more, we have more to treat, some of those costs go up with that anyway. I would note that on the transfers, the transfers did, we are projecting to go down from '23 down to 20, in '24 and years going forward. What we've done is we've deferred transferring into our equipment reserve fund. We expect we will be okay because we can transfer from the surcharge fees that we have set in place at the current time to handle that. And then, you know, depending on how our variable costs go and also the debt service goes, because we will also know, hopefully, mid-'24, what the actual cost of the plant construction will be because we'll bid it by that point in time. So current rate structure, if you, if we did nothing, we would be, as you can tell, going upside down in, in a fairly quickly process. And so that's not a legal for us to do and, and be good practice. So to meet those requirements, this is what the rate structure would need to look like. Now, that is based on all those numbers back in the slide earlier that had the variable costs in there and the debt service costs in there. Should those numbers be lower in future years, that would mean that you could potentially have a lower rate increase in the future years going forward, too. We had talked in the workshop about doing a five-year rate increase. Before you tonight, it's just a one-year rate increase, and then we would bring back a future rate increase for, based on, you know, we can, we hopefully will by that time have the cost of the construction, the bids will be in, we'll know what that is. That can be put back in the model and analyzed. And we will also bring back a sewer, surcharge user fee rate increase or, or model, not increase, but change in that model for your consideration later in the year of '24. So tonight, what we're before you is just the '24 rate increase, not the rate increases in '25 and the years beyond. And of course, while you shouldn't necessarily only base your rates based on what other cities are doing, because you should fund it to provide the services your community needs, and every city's different for varying reasons. The question is always, how do we compare? And so we did include that in here, and I know Wichita just actually did raise their rates. I do not know what they raised them to. I just know they did. And Derbyan, and my understanding is Derbyan Maze, I think, are, are investigating rate increases because they're going through similar processes like we are now. And of course, then you've got some others that have some pretty higher rate, or substantially higher rates that have went through this process previously. So this gives you a comparison, kind of where we're at in comparison to other areas in, in the south central Kansas. And I would be happy to stand for any questions that you may have at this point in time. I would note that Sarah and Nicole from PEC, who worked on, Sarah is the team lead on the design project, and Nicole was the person who was the team lead on the rate study, are here, as long as also Brian Walsh, your plant operator, manager that is, I talked about earlier, is doing a phenomenal job, is here. So if you have any questions, I'm sure that I probably can't answer them, but we have really smart people that can.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Well, so Rick, why don't we lock the rates in now as opposed to just doing the one, the one right now?
Well, there is a couple of reasons. One, the, the template that we had was set for a single-year model change. So we, we wanted to get it done before the end of the year. We did not want to throw at legal a multi-year rate increase with a short turnaround time for them to review. And additionally, by waiting, we will have a better idea of actually what the construction costs will be. And then in the future years going forward, because it could make a, it could make a substantial reduction or increase, depending on how the bids come in. We, we feel that we're very conservative with the estimate, and that's what the engineers have told me. So, you know, if they do come in substantially lower, then that could change the need for some of that rate increase going forward, too. I would, I would also mention, I failed to mention that it's, our rates have not changed since 2016. And I know I put this in my memo a lot, and I don't know that I've said this out loud in a council forum, but most of you have heard it from me, is that going forward, we should probably avoid having static rates for six, seven, eight years. Our cost goes up. We need to, we want to leave the people that come after us in a financial health to be able to take care of this utility. So it's probably not doing us justice to leave them static that long. So every few years, we should reevaluate the rates going forward, even after we get past this five-year period, and, and adjust them accordingly.
Thanks, Rick. As far as the, the new plant, when it comes online, how, how far beyond the use date will it be of the, the current plant? I mean, are we going to be seven years beyond the date of the current plant by the time this one gets done?
Well, I think, I was told that they think they can build it in two years. So that would put us at 2026, and it was '97. So it'd be close to 30 years. Am I doing my math right on that, then? Yeah, so we'd be almost 10 years past, close to 10 years past that. Now, if we would have done it earlier, we would still be back in 20 years probably anyway, because we would have probably had run into this issue with the phosphates because we probably would not have been prepared to handle it at that time anyway. So by extending it, we've actually saved on that cost. You know, that we would have, you know, we would have probably not had to do so much expansion for volume, but we would have had to do it for treatment processes.
Thank you, Rick.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have just a comment. I think it's a good idea that you're just doing it for one year, and that way you can see the construction costs. I was actually thinking that while you were talking, and, and that way we can control our costs a lot better. And who knows? I mean, it, we, the, the following year could drop a dollar, but if something crazy happens, we might have to raise it just a little bit as well, too, to cover the cost. And, and at that point, you'll know what your next five-year rates will be. So you could do your one year now and then come back a year from now and say, let's change this for the next four years since we know what our costs really are. I think it's good.
Yeah, and obviously, what the actual operational, those variable contractual costs will be, we'll have a better handle on that as we actually get the plant up and running also.
All right. Anyone else? Brian, you have anything you'd like to add? No? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt the resolution establishing the sewer service charge base rates effective upon the billing cycle commencing the first day of February 2024.
Second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, ladies, too. 13-1 Founders Parkway, Allen Street to Andover Road, preliminary engineering amendment number four for survey services. Les Mangus will talk to us about this.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, as we've developed plans and acquired four of the five parcels necessary for the Founders Parkway project in their entirety, we've developed what we call remnants of property, that bit of the property that's left over after we take the right-of-way we need for the road project. Those remnants in this case are fairly sizable, and we think that we can assemble those for sale at a later date. The amendment before you tonight is for the engineer to prepare legal descriptions, get title work, and extend a sewer line across our new roadway so that in the future, as we market those properties, they would have water and sewer service available without cutting our new road. So that the, the costs are just for the engineering to prepare those remnant properties for sale in the future.
Any questions?
Shelby, you want to go back and forth?
Sure.
Shelby behind the flowers? I can see your name.
Very pretty flowers.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve amendment number four with Trans Systems Corporation Wichita, Kansas to the Founders Parkway, Allen to Andover Road project in the not-to-exceed amount of $29,734.58.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. This is my favorite ordinance to date. 14-1 Golf Carts, UTV slash ATVs ordinance amendment.
We have worked on this one for a while. So what we're bringing in front of you, we've talked about these in a few different councils or workshops in depth over the years. We've had ordinance for quite some had an ordinance for quite some time that has golf carts. We've allowed them and UTVs. We just haven't had anything with, and kind of this is with our city attorney's been great about coming with other cities he's worked at as well, bringing some ideas, which we brought to the workshop as well. One of those is adding the UTVs, defining that, which we hadn't really defined before. So with our city attorney's recommendation, they cleaned up to mirror a lot of what the state had on, because we had too many definitions of all these and separated. So they cleaned that up very well and under our definition section, put them where they should be, so it's less confusion, because there was a lot of that. And the big change is also since we went to Yorktown, it was our first street that had a 30. A lot of these are 25. We do have 40s and stuff. But golf carts and in any of these vehicles were not allowed on anything above 25 for for good reasons. But then we had some folks that were coming in wanting to be able to have the utility train, or these are also called side-by-sides, is what some people will call them, on 40-minute hour roads. So our city attorney, and again, we brought these to you, to change the ordinance to pretty much allow golf carts, our worksite utilities on roads that are 30 or less. Again, they cannot be on central, on any roads that are pretty much going to be above 30. And then, one of the big changes is also with these, as you'll see in the red, that's why I left them that way, the big changes on there are like having, you have to have a valid driver's license and present that with you, because before it decided you had to have a license, didn't necessarily had to present it or have it on, you just said you had to have it. So clean that up, a good part of it. Also, the amount of seating that you could have on the golf courses. And this is on all of them, you have to do for the manufacturer. So if you only have four seats, then you can only have four people. Again, that wasn't very well-defined. And then you can't operate any of these on our sidewalks, pedestrian walkways, bike paths. That wasn't defined before either. So it's another area it covered a little bit, but at least we put it in this one to be very clear if people wanted to read that ordinance. The big change is going to be obviously on the, as we call the side-by-side, where it would allow someone to have those on city streets that are going to be your 40. But they have to meet certain criteria with that. And as you'll see on here, that it's going to be, they have to have low tire pressures, manufacturers provided foot controls, throttle controls, occupant restraints, rollover protection, two working headlights. In some ways, a lot safer than a motorcycle would be, is what this is going to allow. Same things, you have to have the passengers have to, on this one, they have to wear seat belts, which is designed to have that anyways, as well as children, safety seats, they have to be able to be in restraint in that type of vehicles, or manufactured to have that anyways. Also, with the number of passengers, again, all these have to have that, where you have to make them fit to that particular vehicle and stuff. So I'm bringing this for your consideration, if you have any questions as well. One other thing that was added to this, I appreciate it from J T's office, it was very important, I thought, and we didn't have it before. My goodness, J T, where was that actually did on this? Subject to any allowance required by federal law, including American with Disability Act. So that was a big part that we didn't cover as well, and I appreciated seeing that one. So that was the one thing that we didn't have before, that we didn't discuss, but that was important to add to that. So any questions with this?
So more of a statement. To be clear, essentially, you have to follow the same protocol as a motor vehicle. And just because it can fit on a 10-foot wide sidewalk doesn't mean you can take it on a 10-foot side, including Red Buttrill.
You bet. And that's why I was glad we added that, included that on there, even though it was another place you could find it, it's in here. It's easy for people to see, and we're going to have that in our pamphlets and education part of it, just so people understand. These are the rules. It's very easy to find it compared to try to go to different areas and and look those up.
So Andover citizens, you, I see it quite frequently, on the other side of the county line, they can't, they do it, whether they can or not, I don't know. But just because they do it over across west of 159 does not mean we can do it on this side of 159.
Yes, sir.
So just to, we need to make that clear that, or you'll be using the food for fines program.
Very possible.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment. I I love this. This is a great addition that we've added. But can you also talk about them coming in and getting the stickers and getting them inspected as well?
Yes. So that has not changed, but it's actually a good point on that. We require a registration once a year. You do have to have that mounted on your vehicle in the rear so it can be readily seen. We don't do annuals, some places do that, what have you, but it's a one-time fee. You come in, you pay the registration, and then you're done for that, that particular vehicle. Now, each one you have, yes, you have to do each one of those.
Is it, Jenny, this question for you, is it too late to get something in the utility bill for January? Or do we have enough room in the packet to do that?
We can rework it.
All right. If not, we can do Facebook page, though, right?
You can put, we can absolutely do something online, no problem. And we can rework the the layout for the utility bill if if that.
Or we can wait in February, we'll do, put it in the mayor message.
Not the best weather for golf cart riding, so we can do it in February.
Let's do that. All right.
Well, I'm sure people, the word will get out already, told the folks that are continually yapping at me about it, that it would be on there. So it's not, it's not like there's a truckload of people waiting to rip down the street on their golf cart.
They've only had a few that have asked me and.
Your mic was not on.
Oh.
PDF.
All right.
Hmm?
I just said PDF.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve an ordinance authorizing the operation of utility terrain vehicles or UTVs on the streets within the corporate limits of the city of Andover, Kansas, and amending chapter, oh my, 18, Article 5, Sections 18-501 and 18-502 of the Code of the City of Andover, Kansas.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. 15-1 2024 Council Meeting Calendar, P F, PDF.
Mr. Mayor, the calendar for 2024 is before you tonight. I do believe this is quite possibly the least adjusted calendar I've seen in a number of years, maybe ever. The only adjustments we have made from your typical second and last Tuesday night with workshops, the Monday night before the last Tuesday night, is in December, just like we're doing this year. We didn't presume anyone wanted to meet on New Year's Eve, so we canceled that city council meeting, and we pushed your workshop up from that last Monday, December 30th, up to December 9th, the night before your December meeting. And then Memorial Day will forever be a conflict with that workshop, I believe. So we did push your May 27 workshop up in front of your first meeting in May to May 13. Everything else should follow the second and last Tuesday and the Monday before the last Tuesday pattern.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just throw out a comment and just see what others are thinking, and maybe even some of the new council members that are coming in. March 12 is spring break. I don't know if that's a conflict for anybody, but I know that we did have a council meeting this past March on that day. But I just want to throw it out and see what others are, do you have any conflicts now? So, I mean, we can always move it up the week before, but that does make two a back-to-back.
Well, the bigger problem is you do have other Tuesday night meetings that are not city council. You have standing site plan review and planning commission meetings. We can make adjustments, but there there are other things going on on those Tuesday nights that I would remind you of.
So just throwing it out there, just wanted to see what y'all's comments are.
So the 12th is Tuesday after Memorial Day, or?
Well, spring break is, yeah, is is the 10th through the 16th, which the 12th is right, you know, right in the middle there. I don't know if I'm going to have conflicts or not, but I just wanted to, if anyone else, because most of y'all have kids in school or, so, just throwing it out there. That was the only conflict I saw that could possibly be happening. You know, that you you did a great job on moving everything else around.
We can either table it and look at spring break, or we can move forward with it if we feel like at least four people will be here.
Counsel?
I'm, I'm fine for moving forward with him. Mike, I appreciate you bringing it up, as I have three little ones, but I don't know if I could do five days with them. So I'm going to say that that we would just, we would just be able to leave maybe the 13th or 14th for a two-day trip somewhere, so.
Yeah, or maybe, maybe have the 12th as a light meeting or something, so.
Yeah.
Like a Weight Watcher meeting.
I've been instructed by one of the new council members that we will expedite things, be expeditious in our council meetings. So I don't want to name no name.
Good luck.
Jody.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Move to approve the 2024 Andover City Council meeting calendar as presented.
Second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. All right, executive session.
We don't have a motion.
Oh, yep. Did I skip something?
No, there's just no motion on that.
There's no motion on that count, the thing. Unless you want to go to executive session, Mayor.
Unless you need one, Mayor. Put one on him, a piece of paper. Do we have an executive session?
JT, is that right?
Executive session? No.
We do not have an executive session, but did you all, did you all vote? Because I was looking at the fact that we don't have an executive session.
Excuse me?
We all voted.
Okay, perfect. You do not have an executive session. That is an error that is on your agenda.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right, we're going to do member items a little different tonight. I want to start with Shelby. And how about it?
Yeah, so this is my last meeting. Gosh, when I, when I ran for this position, I didn't really know with any, what to expect, didn't know what I was doing. And sometimes you're just kind of called to something, and you're not quite sure what it's going to lead to when you, when you, when you get it. And what I didn't expect was just the level of dedication from really everybody involved in this city. Obviously, everybody up here is dedicated and passionate about our vision for the city. And as we're kind of trying to stitch together this sort of shared vision for the future, the city staff is, you know, making those hopes into a reality. And just the quality of character that the city staff has, and just the driven, hardworking, you know, positive attitudes that I see from nearly everybody in this past four years is just, it's so impressive. And it's what you just always hope that your, that your city staff is, that they feel that way about their city. So I just leave with a lot of admiration for them. And it's a bittersweet goodbye, but I am a big believer that government bodies work the best in the way that they're intended to, when new people and new perspectives and new ideas are constantly moving through it. So congratulations to our new people coming in. It is just such an excellent thing to have new people involved and just kind of making the city what it is. And yeah, just thank you to the city staff for being so patient with somebody who had no idea what they were doing when they started here. And thank you to the city as a whole for electing me into this body and allowing me to be of service in this way, because it's certainly something that I will take with me for, for a long time from now. So, thank you.
Sir.
That was so good. Yeah. I'll keep, I'll keep my short. I'll echo everything there. I feel like the word character of the city, based on the staff and what they're able to accomplish, from what we, we put on their shoulders, and then from what the citizens are really looking for, for our city, is kind of key to why Andover is probably the best city to live in in all of Kansas. And it's on you. We're, we're lucky to be up here and to have been elected to be able to represent. Everyone here has put in the time and effort to make sure that that the citizens are taken care of, and I think we all see that. For me, I, it's been a long time that I've been here. I don't know if anybody knew how I got onto this, but man, a long time ago, we were looking at doing, like, recycling in the city. And there was a discussion about forcing everybody to pay for recycling. In my mind, I'm like, everyone should recycle everything they possibly can, but the government shouldn't necessarily put their hand on you until you must. So I started sending some emails back and forth to the council at the time. And suddenly, somebody goes, well, why don't you just do something then? And and there's a planning commission seat open. And I'm like, I don't know what that is, but okay. And yeah, that was fun. Planning commission's a whole different character. That was Ben. Yeah, Mayor Ben. And then a year and a half later, Byron Stout and myself both ran for city council and made it on. Byron Stout was a mentor, wonderful man, excellent Christian, taught me one of the best lessons I'd heard in a long time. And he gave a story about when he was a child and he was mowing his lawn and for his dad at his house. And he came back in, and his dad, also Byron Stout, took him back outside and had him look at his grass, at his lawn, and said, well, son, you know, this is God's lawn. It's not mine. It's God's lawn. And so how do you think you've done for God's lawn? You know, how do you think you did a good enough job mowing the lawn? And that really stuck with me, and is a reason why I dedicated so much of my life to really the different committees and all that kind of stuff to this city, is it's God's city. And by God, I'm going to do what I can to do, you know, the best for God's city. So that's where I, I got a lot of my dedication to do what I've done. It is bittersweet as well. 12 years is a long time. I've loved it. I love it. I love the people, all of you. And what I've seen you do and accomplish, it's been, I don't know, third of my life. So I love it. I'll miss you all. I'll come in, you know, every so often. Thank you.
Jim?
I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas. I can't follow any of that. So Merry Christmas.
How about you, Mike?
Just one thing. It's been a pleasure also serving with you guys, and going to miss you a lot. We've still got a lot of disc golf to play, so don't forget that. One of the things that kind of I was listening to about the Andover Food Bank is, I've been on the the grant funds several times, I think. And but we always give them $2,000 every year, which is great. And they do a great thing. And, and their things have increased a lot. So I just want to tell the next grant fund committee, whoever is going to be on that, is, let's think about that one. Let's see if we can do something a little bit more. So that's, that's all I had to say.
All right. All right.
Hometown Christmas, Thursday at 5:30. Always a good time. Andover Central Park. Here, Santa Claus is going to be there, the Grinch, hoping for something good this year. So we'll see how that goes. Since the mayor's not going to say this, he was actually made an honorary commander of the 931st Air Refueling Wing at McConnell Air Force Base last week. And that's a big deal. I think it speaks to him as, you know, a public servant and how much he gives back, not only to Andover, but the surrounding communities. And it speaks volumes about the type of person that he is.
I just want to tell Shelby, like your bouquet of flowers there has the the four purple roses, just like the lights on South Andover Road, Evergy has given us the purple lights. Symbolic of your four years here, we appreciate you and love you, and hopefully you won't be a stranger. Troy, thanks for being a mentor. Thanks for your last 12 years. The city is, you're, you're leaving it, like Rick said earlier, you're leaving it better than when you came in. And that's because of the, the values, the debates, everything that you've blessed us with these last 12 years and the last four years that, you know, I've been on the council with you. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Merry Christmas to all and Happy New Year.
I've, I've said all the things I can say, but I would like to say, and Dr. Forbes was part of it, and city staff, what we've done in four years with this city as a, as a council is, is historic, you know? We've got buildings coming out of the ground like we never would have thought of, a brand-new fire station that was no easy task. So all of us working together, at times, we butted heads, but at the end of the day, we found a way to get to the point. So this, this governing body's done some, seriously, you know, you get closer, when you, y'all got a minute to go, but when you, when you, you, whether you want to or not, I heard a pastor say, whether you want to or not, you leave a legacy. Except you decide whether it's a good one or a bad one. And if we, if we stop right now, this, this governing body and this staff has done a, left a legacy for this city. So I thank all of you for what you do. And we'll keep moving. All right? Can I get a motion adjourned? So moved?
Second. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero.